Six thirty.
I get six thirty. Okay, you guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening, folks. I would like to open the Leominster Planning Board for October 20, 2025, six thirty. Okay. Our first hearing is a continued open public meeting for a site plan application for eighty-six Orchard Hill Park Drive map three eight six, block four, lot one C, multifamily residential development. Do I have a representative here?
Yep, good evening. For the record, map on B C with Bol Engineering here with Jim Lambert, who represents the applicant, W P East Acquisitions LLC.
Okay.
Evening. I guess I'll just give a very quick overview to kind of how we got here. We first met with the planning board on, on May nineteenth.
Can I, can I stop you just for one minute? Can everyone in the audience hear him?
No.
How about now, better? Yep. Yep. First attended the planning board hearing on May nineteenth, subsequently attended on July twenty-first, and most recently on September fifteenth. And as part of the process, we've had a few different peer reviews. Stormwater peer review with the city's third-party consultant, traffic peer review with the city's third-party consultant, and departmental review. As part of that process, there have been many, many changes, responses, updates to the plans. Just to highlight a few of the items, as part of the traffic review, there was some mitigation proposed, so cost allocation to the town of Lancaster for improvements on various intersections, Old Union Turnpike and Route Two, and Harvest Street and Mechanic Street, striping improvements to Orchard Hill Park Drive, a commitment to a three hundred sixty-degree fire preemption camera for the wire.
You still get a little closer to the mic.
Oh, sure, better now?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I think I'll just have to speak right into it.
Sure. Three hundred sixty-degree fire preemption camera per the fire inspector request, radio testing determined if PDAs are required, a commitment to work with the fire department if there's a possibility to add in a tenant to one of the buildings in case it could improve their communication throughout the entire area. A third trash enclosure was added to the plans, which was relocated since the last hearing because it was kind of nearer to the, to the western or the residential abutting property boundary. Additional snow storage areas were added, which is compliant with the zoning requirement, and also commitment that the applicant's fully responsible for removal of snow if required within twenty-four hours of the end of a snow event. Additionally, bicycle racks added throughout the site, EV charging spaces, ride share spaces, a commitment to use salt alternatives, and various other comments as we've gone through the peer review process. Since September fifteenth hearing, there've been a few updates, in particular, two specific items that were updated as part of the plans. The first was stormwater updates per the vernal pools that were identified on the site. Those areas are, I guess you can see my, my mouse hand here and here along the eastern boundary of the, of the parcel. We revised the plans, provided a new stormwater report. In consideration of those vernal pools, in particular, we designed BMPs in the site per standard six of the stormwater handbook. Those updates included making sure there were no stormwater discharges to the vernal pools within a hundred feet of the vernal pools, making sure there were no stormwater BMPs within a hundred feet of the vernal pool areas themselves anywhere on the site. We provided expanded pre- and post-development analysis of hydrology to include the vernal pool areas as a separate analysis, where we analyzed the peak flows and the peak volumes to those, to those two areas. As part of that analysis, we are not increasing the peak rates or volumes to the vernal pools by mimicking, mimicking those volumes to the maximums and practical to be supportive of the vernal pool habitat. And the city did have an additional stormwater review for, for those updates. As part of the review, there was one common response back and forth, and I believe there are no outstanding comments relative to that review, aside from, obviously, the vernal pools also reviewed, reviewed with Conservation Commission, so we'll expect to complete that permitting process with them. Additionally, and I didn't know, discussed at the last hearing, was the, the western property boundary and landscape improvements along, along that area, and we had to, we were asked to take a look at that and see if we could improve that at all, and, and we did look at it with the applicant and made, made a few different improvements along that area. Firstly, we looked at the site layout and looked for any way we could possibly shrink or reduce or provide additional, additional setbacks to the area. So for these drive aisles, through the center of development, we reduced them from twenty-four feet to twenty-two feet. And we also looked at the landscaped areas between the, the buildings and the, the parking themselves. We do need some area there for utilities, landscaping, sidewalks, and things like that, but we're able to reduce those a couple feet as well. The grand result was that we were able to shift these, these parking garages eighteen feet to the north, so that they're completely fifty feet away from the, the residential setback there, and then along here, I think we're able to pick up five or six feet by squeezing everything this way. Additionally, we looked at the grading within those areas and just see if we could, could tighten up the grading to limit the limit of work, and, and we were able to in places with the, the minimal slopes and swales required to diverge stormwater. Additionally, as part of the project, we're now proposing a thirteen hundred and seventy linear feet of solid privacy fence along this boundary, so if you can see the white line along the top of, of the plan here, it starts here at the, the parking proximate to building A, wraps along this property boundary, all the way up to the corner, along this side here, and then ends down here by the, the intermittent street crossing. The fence would be six foot high and be placed at the top of the cut slope there, so the effective height of the fence would be, it places eleven feet higher than the parking grade. That, that's right there. Additionally, we did take a look at putting some additional plantings between the fence and the, the development itself. We want to keep the fence at the perimeter there because that's the highest spot and it provides the most privacy, but we did provide thirty-two evergreen plantings along this perimeter here to just beef up that landscaping along the boundary. Lastly, along building A here, this little stretch here, the fence is set about twenty-five feet from the property boundary, so in addition to the natural wooded buffer, we're proposing fifty-five, a double row of deciduous and evergreen plantings there to provide an additional screening buffer at that one specific location where it's the tightest. As, as part of our submission, I know Stephanie and Elizabeth asked if we could provide an exhibit that just showed the various setbacks within the property and outside the property just to give the board a better understanding of what, what was proposed and some of the changes, so we did submit this, this plan that I have on this plate here, hopefully had a chance to review. I can flip through it really quickly with just some, some smaller insights of what was proposed. So this year, this is building A and building B. If you look down here at the bottom right, this is the area of the plan we're looking at. This here is the landscape buffer along building A, the remaining natural vegetation here between the property line and, and this line here. These plantings here are the double row of deciduous and evergreen screen plantings, and then the white fence along that boundary there. In addition to that, that buffer, there is also the setback from the property line to the abutting houses, so this is twenty-five feet from the fence to the property line. There's an additional forty-five feet of wooded buffer outside of the property boundary, and it's a hundred and ten feet from, from that dwelling to the property boundary here. Additionally, this is building B here. This garage here is set fifty feet from the property boundary to the back. There's some plantings proposed along the back of that garage. The fence, again, is proposed at the top of the, the cut slope. That slope's about five feet high, so the fence is essentially eleven feet from the top of the fence to the parking grade itself, about twenty-four feet at the closest from the fence to the property boundary to the, to the remaining natural buffer, and then again, a, a setback of a hundred and twenty-five feet of wooded buffer from that point forward on the abutting property. A second zoom in here is located near building C. That's up here at this top left corner of the site, if you can see the locust map up at the top. Similarly, the, the parking itself for the drive aisle here is set sixty feet back from the property line. There's plantings, these are shade tree plantings as well as the evergreen plantings or the, that I, that I mentioned before, the fence at the top of the slope. Again, the fence would be five feet above the, the grade of the drive aisle, so eleven feet from the top of the fence to the drive aisle itself. Within this area, the only, only thing within the fifty feet is this, this garage here, which was kind of selectively put here and lines up with the, the drive aisles between these two buildings and provides an additional screen, in our opinion, from that drive aisle to, to the back. There's no lights or anything on the back of these buildings, so it almost acts as a screen within that area. Again, the, there's additional setback outside of this line. I believe it's a hundred and five feet from, from this line here to the, to the pool along the back here of additional wooded buffer. Sorry, the third location, oh, excuse me. Third location here is that building F. This is that building on the, the other side of that, that clump of buildings here, where this red box is here. The garage itself is setback thirty-three feet to the property line here. The drive aisle is fifty-six feet from the, from the setback, and the parking thirty-eight feet. Through here, the minimum setback from the fence is fifteen feet to the property line. Again, the fence was located to be at the top of the slope rather than further, further down the slope. The cut in this area is about three to four feet, so the, the effective height to the top of the fence is more like ten feet from, from the parking spaces of the drive aisles. The only location along this boundary here where it gets a little further away is down here, and the reason for that is the fire retention areas and the wetland replication areas, which are planted areas anyways, but we wanted to keep the fence outside so those areas could be, be maintained and planted. It's also important to note here, there's an additional hundred feet of wooded buffer outside the property line to this approximate limit of vegetation here on the abutting property. A good chunk of that is, is wetland area, so area that's unable to be built on. That's the area shaded in green on this plan that swings along here. Last but not least, this is building G. This is down here on the opposite side of the, the well and crossing. The building itself is set fifty feet from the, from the boundary. This parcel we have shaded in green here is the, the Leominster Land Trust parcel, so it's under conservation restriction, and the, the dark area here is wetlands that were from the skyline plans of, of what was on those properties. And there's no dwelling in immediate, immediate vicinity of, of this area, against bounded, bounded largely by the Land Trust parcel. The closest building is two hundred and seventy feet away from this area here. So accordingly, we focused a lot of our plantings, fencing, and things on the, on the other side where the residential units were a little closer. As I said, I think those were the two key items we wanted to run through this evening. One, the vernal pool, stormwater calculations. We think we've completed that peer review process, and again, we, we did hear the board ask if we could do more along that, that western property boundaries, so through the fencing, the, the reduction in the limit of work, and the additional plantings. Hope to, to address that comment as well. Anything else you want to add, Jim?
You're, you're finished?
Um, yep, yeah, happy to take.
We have a housekeeping matter. We needed to read the procedure.
What was that?
We need to read the procedure of the meeting. We, we need to do that.
Go ahead.
Welcome. Welcome, everyone, to the Leominster Planning Board meeting. This is an official government meeting. We would like to explain the procedure for this meeting before we begin. Public hearings and open public meetings will be open per schedule on the agenda. Once a hearing on, or open public meeting is open, the applicant will have an opportunity to make a presentation to the board, which they have done. Once each applicant has presented, members of the planning board may have questions or comments before we invite members of the audience to comment in regard to any applications. Prior to inviting your comments, however, we will read into the record all written comments from individuals who cannot be present this evening. Do note that all letters that have been received with no return address are not required to be read, however, we do provide copies to the board for them to take into consideration. Anyone who wishes to speak may approach the podium and must state their full name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to a two-minute timeframe. Other than speaking at the podium, members of the public are requested not to speak out during the meeting. To avoid redundancy, if a comment has previously been made by another person, you can simply state that you agree or disagree with what was mentioned. Please only speak if you have a new matter to raise for the board's consideration. All comments are to be made through the chair and are not to be addressed to the applicant directly. If the chair would like further clarification, he will ask the applicant directly to respond. Once all public comments have been noted, applications will be discussed individually by the planning board members. The board will then vote to either close or continue each respective public hearing or open public meeting. We will then open our regular planning board meeting. When we reach the applications on the agenda, the board will then vote on the applications.
Thank you, Carol. Okay. Do I have any questions at this time from the board?
I, I wanted to ask about, and I know you went in, I know you went into this, but if you could, I want, I want to ask you about the, the buffers. We can, it's within our discretion to, to, to determine the buffers, but in no case shall we be required to be, to exceed fifty feet. Can you tell us where the, the largest buffer is on the plan and then the most, and then the narrowest?
Yeah, of course.
And the, and what the, what the distance is, too?
Property line. I could, yeah, I can mention. Yeah, yeah, so the largest buffer is going to be here along the, the clubhouse area, the area coming to the site, I believe it's a hundred and five feet from the limit of work to the property line itself. The, the shortest buffer, I would say, would be here along building A is thirty feet from the edge of pavement to, to the property line, is twenty-five feet from the fence to the property line itself, the six-foot-high privacy fence, and this is the area we focused. Plantings along this area, double row of, of evergreen and deciduous plantings along the, the remainder of the buffer, the, the grading. As we, I think we mentioned in one of the earlier hearings, we sought to create a cut slope that would just help provide additional privacy along those areas, so along here, the fence is at the top of the slope about eleven feet. Again, like I said, at the top of the fence to the, to the parking and the drive aisle here, we proposed the plantings where grade is just more or less at or just below grade, so that the additional plantings beef that area out.
So a question, you've, you've added additional plantings there.
Correct, at that spot.
And that the top of the fence, because there's a incline there, is now, is essentially eleven feet?
Correct.
Is that what you said?
Yep, especially along these, these borders here where I'm kind of drawing my most, eleven feet from the top of the fence to the, to the parking area. We added additional plantings along the border. I'd also point, we did pull the limit of work in through both the, the reduction in the drive aisles and also just taking a fine look at the grading and squeezing it as most, so it obviously varies throughout the, the plan, but for instance, in this area here, I believe we had a, a ten-foot natural buffer. It's been increased to about twenty, twenty-five.
Is the buffer to the driveway or to the building? How close you to the actual building?
Up to the building. Yep, yeah, so to the, the buffer to the building is going to be about ninety-five feet.
Ninety-five, to the building?
To the building, to the property line.
Right. So you're saying you're considering the buffer, not, not considering roadway? So is your buffer measurement to roadway and parking, or is it to the building?
The numbers I've given are to the, to the parking, to the nearest.
To the parking.
Yeah, the nearest.
I just wanted to clarify that, so we know. So, so that to the parking lot, but there's additional space from the parking to the buildings, of course.
Correct, yeah, quite a bit of space there.
Okay, go ahead, continue.
Sure, and that would be the, the closest location. Again, this over here being the furthest, a hundred and five feet to the mo, limit of work along this, excuse me.
Okay.
I'm gonna make everybody sick. Along this, this border here, greater than fifty feet from the, from the property line to the garages or the edge of parking, along this border here, the drive aisle itself is about sixty feet away. The closest to garage, to the back of a garage is thirty-three feet along the back, where these garages are closest to the, to the buffer.
Now, those garages are how high?
Thirteen-ish feet, I believe.
Thirteen?
Yeah, one story.
Okay.
And again, we located those strategically at, at a couple locations, in particular here and here, to line up with the drive aisles coming through. There's no lights on the back of them or anything like that, so we felt they provided some additional screening if we located them at those specific locations.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone else have a question? I'll ask one more time, board. Okay, I'll open it to the audience.
We have letters.
Letters first.
Oh, you got the letters, forget about them, sorry.
This first one is from Rosemary Carosis, Seven Suthers Crossing in Leominster. Dear Planning Board, I am unable to attend the planning board meeting of October twenty, twenty twenty-five. My name is Rosemary Carosis, and I have been a Leominster resident for twenty-five years. In that time, I have seen the impact of the development of Walmart Plaza in the Lancaster Street area. The traffic increase and degradation of the road have been significant, not to mention the significant increase in trash between Walmart and one ninety. I am concerned about the proposed development of the Orchard Hills Park. I am against the development as currently proposed because of the significant negative impact of traffic to public safety. I access the area at target from Mechanic Street to Harvard Street, and I'm a member of Orchard Hills Athletic Club. It is already an issue to get to the gym with the current level of traffic. Adding four hundred households to this area will negatively impact the traffic pattern. Additionally, I am a cyclist, and I am worried about the safety of cycling in this area with the addition of so many cars to an already very busy area. I am also concerned about the sustainability of this development and other developments in Leominster. Do we have enough water for all these new households? How about electricity? We have seen severe drought in Leominster. Will there be water reclamation for water, for watering? This will be a large draw to the electricity grow, grid. Is there a plan for solar panels to be installed for covered parking or to put solar panels on the roof of the buildings? Please take this into account when you are considering this project. Sincerely, Rosemary Carosis, Seven Suthers Crossing, Leominster. Now.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is dated, that one, by the way, was dated October twentieth, I may, I may have said that. This is dated October seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, from Chelsea Madison. Dear members of the planning board, my name is Chelsea Madison, and I live at sixty-five Harvard Street. I am here tonight to ask firmly and respectfully that you require sidewalks on Harvard and Stagecoach as a condition of approval for the proposed three hundred eight-unit apartment complex. Let's be clear about what's at stake. Harvard and Stagecoach are narrow, fast-moving roads with no sidewalks. They are already unsafe. Families, kids, and seniors cannot walk safely to Prospect Park, which is less than a half mile away, or even down the street to see their neighbors. Most major roads in Leominster have sidewalks except ours, and with this project, that gap becomes a serious and immediate safety issue. Not long ago, there was a serious pedestrian accident on Willard Street, a road nearly identical to Harvard and Stagecoach in both speed and layout. That accident should serve as a warning. We don't need to wait for it to happen here before acting. This project will bring more than three hundred new vehicles to an area that is already busy and difficult to navigate. Cars will be entering and exiting from multiple access points directly into Harvard Street. That means more congestion, more blind spots, and more danger for anyone walking, jogging, or even pulling out of their driveway. The police chief himself stated at that last council meeting that the department already struggles to respond to current traffic complaints. If that is the case now, how will we possibly expect to handle hundreds more vehicles on roads that were never designed for this kind of load? This is not a small issue. This could be a matter of life and death. Are we really going to put a price on that? Sidewalks are not an unreasonable demand. They are basic, basic safety measure. Based on standard Massachusetts construction costs, adding a sidewalk along one side of Harvard and Stagecoach, about one point three miles total, would cost roughly two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. Even with sidewalks on both sides, the total would likely stay under one million. In the context of a three hundred eight-unit housing development, that cost is minimal. In the context of a human life, it is priceless. Legally, you have not just the discretion, but the authority and obligation to require it. Under the U.S. Supreme Court decisions in Nolanby, California, coastal it, under the U.S. Supreme Court decisions in Nolan v. California Coastal Commission 1987, and Dolan v. City of Tygard 1994. Planning boards are empowered to require public safety improvements such as sidewalks when there is a clear connection between a development project and the safety issue it creates. The rulings affirm that such conditions are entirely lawful when they are proportional to the project's impact. That connection here is undeniable. Hundreds of car, new cars and pedestrians will be added to roads that are already unsafe. That is the definition of a direct impact. So tonight, I am asking you to use that authority. Require sidewalks on Harvard Street and Stagecoach Road as part of the project's build-out. It is not an extra, it is essential. It is the responsive, as responsible thing to do. This is your opportunity to make a decision that protects both current residents and future tenants, and to ensure that growth in the city happens safely, thoughtfully, and responsibly. Thank you for your time and for listening to the people who live here and walk these roads every day. Respectfully, Chelsea Madison, resident Orchard Hills neighborhood. I don't know if she's here, but that, it was very well-written, A+, in terms of process, and I'm not, I'm not really being facetious about that, and I'm being completely sincere. I'm going to read this next one, which I, I think is more in line with the zoning amendment, but I'm, I'm going to read it into, into the record. Dear members of the planning board, I have a brief procedural comment, oh, and this is from Haley Brady, 200 Harvard Street, and it was sent October 6th. I have a brief procedural comment regarding tonight's agenda. Items three-point, and that agenda, under plans submitted, appear to involve parcels located within the MU2 district. When considered together with Block 4, Lot 1C, which is already part of the filing at 86 Orchard Hill Park Drive, the combined land area exceeds 20 acres. Under Section 22-28.2.3 of the zoning ordinance, any project greater than 20 acres in size requires that, quote, "An informational meeting with the city council must be scheduled prior to the filing of an application for site plan approval and/or special permit." Given that this threshold has been met, I respectfully request that the agendas on that not be advanced, continued, or scheduled for future hearings until the required informational meeting with the city council has been properly noticed, scheduled, or held. This procedural safeguard exists to ensure transparency, coordination between boards, and compliance with the city's own MU2 district requirements, particularly important for large-scale or phased developments such as this one. Thank you for your attention to, thank you for your attention and for ensuring that proper process is followed, Haley Brady, 200 Harvard Street. I know this was responded to, but I wanted, but it, it wasn't mentioned out in, to the, into the public, just via email, so I'm going to, if it's okay, John, can we defer this to
Actually, we defer it to the other.
To our counsel, to Attorney Parata from KP Law to respond. Again, I know this has to do with the, with the zoning amendment, but there is a little overlap as well.
I think that has to do with the subdivision preliminary plans that were submitted. Our reading of that section is it inquires an informational meeting before the city council if a site plan review and/or a special permit is going to be needed. So with those subdivisions, it's unclear what ultimately would happen with those. The subdivision just divides the land. It's unclear whether a project would ever be undertaken on that land, whether it would be connected in this project in some way. It could be an industrial project or something like that. So our, our interpretation of that section is yes, if there's a site plan or a special permit at some point on those properties, that triggers that clause, that, that an informational meeting would be required, but not at this point.
Okay, so, so what I'm saying is the differential, the differential is the subdivision versus a site plan?
Correct, a subdivision versus a site plan or a special permit.
Okay, Elizabeth, all those, those, the three letters?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll open it up to the audience.
Can I just, Haley Brady, 200 Harvard Street, super quick, I won't waste too much of your time. I feel the way it's written can be open to interpretation, which is why I wanted to bring it up to the board. Yes, that's in regards to the subdivision. The subdivision is this land, this is part of the subdivision, and we are here before you for a site plan approval. Therefore, it is the, this is all one, this is one thing. Do with that as you will, but I feel the members of this board should have the opportunity to interpret that and, you know, do with it what you will. This is over 20 acres, we're looking at 75 acres altogether. We, we gotta do some due diligence here.
Hi.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, Sue Shalifu Zephyr City Council here in Lemonster, 25 West Street. I'm following up on Haley Brady because I think it's really clear. On tonight's agenda is the site plan application for 86 Orchard Hill Park Drive, right? That's a site plan application. On a prior meeting's agenda are the 3.5 and 3.6, planned submitted preliminary subdivision applications. The first one, 3.5, includes this site plan, okay? It includes the same lots, map 386, Block 4, Lots 1C, okay? So this subdivision of 17.95 acres or whatever, it is something less than 20 acres, is being combined with, it's 70-plus acres, I don't know offhand, it's 55 and something else, and will be continued. I don't know when it's being rescheduled, but it will be on a future agenda. So that, that provision in the zoning ordinance does apply. It requires any, any project over 20 acres requires a hearing before the city council. Okay?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Justin.
I'm just on the outside.
I would, I don't disagree with that, but the section that you're referring to just references site plan and special permit, correct?
It says for any proposed project greater than 20 acres in size, an informational meeting with the plan, with the city council must be scheduled prior to the filing of an application for site plan approval and/or special permit.
Yeah, so I guess I'd have the same response. That's because this project is less than the 20 acres.
But it's not. It was on the October 6th agenda as a, as a preliminary subdivision application, preliminary subdivision application.
Right, no, no, I mean what we're, right, so what we're hearing on tonight is a site plan.
Right.
That's under 20 acres. A preliminary subdivision plan, it could be a million acres. It doesn't trigger that clause because it's not a site plan review or a special permit. Think of it this way, this project may not even go forward. So if this project didn't need, didn't go forward, and there was a subdivision that went forward preliminarily and then definitively, that wouldn't trigger that section. It wouldn't get triggered until it was clear what was going to be built on there and whether it would need a site plan or a special permit. That's our interpretation. I mean, I, I see the argument, but I don't think it's, I don't think it fits either the way it's written or sort of the spirit, which is to link it to site plan review and special permit.
I think the spirit is to not carve out in a large parcel of land, smaller parcels that don't trigger the 20 units, you know, parcels that are less than 20.
That's a different question, and certainly, but I, I think it's not certainly written in a way that limits it to 20 acres.
Okay.
And unless this project is over 20 acres, and I understand it's not, then our position is that it doesn't apply. But I appreciate you.
Can I, I have a question.
Yep.
But councillor, are you, is there any overlap between, is there an overlap between the preliminary subdivision that's been submitted and the site plan?
Yes. The site plan, this site plan that's on the agenda tonight, 4.1, is included in 3.5, which is the site plan application, oh, preliminary, excuse me, preliminary subdivision application. This, this 17.85 acres is included in 3.5 preliminary subdivision application, that lot is included in that application. Okay? Okay, 17 acres is being incorporated into something that is 55-plus acres, and I may not have that exact number right, but both of the, the preliminary subdivisions, both of them are, you know, north of 70 acres. Okay.
You're backfilling this, in other words, into the original subdivision that we approved for the, the call it Target?
No.
No.
No, no. The subdivision that's on the agenda tonight
Yeah.
is also included, that parcel of land is included in 3.5, which is the number of the plans submitted, preliminary subdivision application, Orchard Hill Park Drive Extension, proposed road extension, map 369, Block 1, Lots 2, 3, and 4, map 386, Block 4, Lots 1C, 3, and 5. Block 1C is what you're looking at tonight. Okay? Map 386, Block 4, Lot 1C is in two places on two different agendas. So this site plan application tonight for a site of less than 20 acres is bundled into a preliminary subdivision application, which was on the October 6th agenda, and will be continued, I imagine, to a future planning board meeting.
And are you, and I, John, if you don't, sorry.
Yep.
So are you, I, I am, we're kind of like overlapping here, but are you, is your request for the preliminary subdivision plan to go to the city council first?
Absolutely.
Okay. So now, now I'm going to turn, so I just want
The whole package, pardon me. The whole package should come to the city council, because this, this that you're looking at tonight, which is less than 20 acres, which doesn't, you know, meet that 20-acre threshold, trigger, is going to be combined with other parcels of land.
So, yeah, I don't know that yet, because it's a preliminary plan.
Okay, well
So I don't, I don't know that yet, and I'm looking, if they never, if they never, I'll, I'll put it to you this way, and I'm kind of jumping ahead. I, I kind of see what you're saying on the, on the preliminary, on the preliminary subdivision plan. But if, putting that aside, if that, and I know it does exist, but if it didn't exist, they're under 20 acres here, whether it was by design or not, I don't know. They're under 20 acres on this particular plan.
And we have to take plans.
So
You have to look at the picture.
So the, my other Okay, now, I, I want to turn it over to the applicant, because I want them to respond to, to this in terms of how they, their opinion.
Quick, mic check here, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, so just to make it
For the record?
Sure, Spencer Holland, Council for Wood Partners, the applicant. So just to make it abundantly clear, the preliminary site plan is not the applicant's site plan. If the owner of the property decided this moment to rescind the preliminary site plan, it would change the applicant's site plan, you know, review and application, not at all. So this is an independent process from the owner deciding to go ahead with or to, you know, not proceed with preliminary site plan approval. So they are independent processes. And again, the, the provision that's been referenced here has to do with a project being shown on a preliminary site plan, and, you know, our understanding, again, not as the owners of the land, is that there is not a project being shown on that plan. But again, even if that preliminary site plan were to disappear today, or preliminary subdivision plan, rather, the site plan application would continue unaffected.
Can I have a follow-up? So what, what is the impact if this is approved? What, what is the impact, or how does this fit into the preliminary subdivision applications that follow that include this project?
I, 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 can, can you reword your question? I don't understand your question.
So the, the site plan application tonight before the
Right.
Board, right? If that is approved, and then subsequently, the board is going to look at these two preliminary subdivision applications, right? One of which includes this site plan application. What impact would an approved site plan application have on a future preliminary subdivision application? I'm just, I'm wondering what the impact is and what the
I don't think we'd always, well, it's already been approved. It would stand alone, and, and would have to, and then the preliminary that's coming in would, would be adjacent to it. And, and, you know, let's say if that preliminary subdivision had not been put in, it would stand alone. And it would happen, let's say it happened six months from now, it would still stand alone. It, you can't go back, okay, to something that was done prior time. Trying to put these together, because this came in, is I, I have, I have a hard time, you know, they stay, they, as I said, they stand alone. I mean, but because it came in at this timeframe, rather than three or four months from now, where this may be, maybe, I'm not saying it will be, maybe if already been approved, it would have no impact whatsoever.
It's hard to separate them, because this one is in fact included in the future preliminary subdivision application, so they're not separate. I mean, you can try to keep them separate or talk about them separately, but it's been included.
I can't do something to the future.
Well, can I, can we defer to Attorney Parata? Can you, Justin, do you?
Yeah, I mean, the other difference is that the site plan is like under the local ordinance. The subdivision process is statutory. Again, the subdivision process, all it does is divide the land. I have a situation now in another town where land was subdivided 20 years prior to it was being developed on. So the subdivision process doesn't anticipate any particular project. It literally just divides the land. Now, you may think that they're going to do something that connects it to what this, this site plan approval asks, but until that's demonstrated via a plan or via an application for a site plan approval or a special permit, the law wouldn't allow that assumption to be made. If your question is what happens to the land, can it be subdivided once a structure is on it, then sure, that happens all the time as well.
All right, thank you.
Did you, did you have any, before we, did you have any response? I'm just, want to make sure everyone
No, I, I completely agree with the, the points that the attorney has just made. I think it's just important, despite the timing, not to conflate the two items.
Please, no, while listening from the audience, please, everyone else will have an opportunity to speak.
Dave Rollins, 49 Brayburn Circle, Lemonster, North Lemonster. First of all, I want to congratulate the, the presentation that they, I thought it was very nice that they didn't count the Butters property as part of the buffer. I, I disagree with the interpretation, but I don't want to get into that. But if you look at the same discussion about site plan, preliminary site plan approval, which contains this project, under section, under Section 12 of Lemonster's regulatory site division approval, it says here, upon submission to the planning board of a preliminary definitive, definitive or definitive subdivision plan, cluster development, mixed-use development, the application is required to submit a general statement of notification and a list that. Part B of this says, based on a review of that, of the above three items, the planning board will determine on whether a development impact statement will be required of the applicant. To me, it seems like we have the cart now before the horse, and I think this was intentional. The developer puts in a site plan application, and then later on applies for a, what do you call it?
Open impact?
And, and no, he, he applies for subdivision regulations afterwards. Clearly, on a project this size, the law states clearly, the ordinance states clearly here, that you can ask for a development impact study based on the preliminary or definitive site plan application. I mean, not site plan, I keep confusing it, not the subdivision application. So I'm assuming, now, the developer wants to waive the impact statement, which is So, I'm assuming, now, the developer wants to waive the impact statement, which is, what's that?
No, put that down.
But I'm gonna, I have to, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt, but we, the preliminary's not even before us. I haven't, I haven't, I don't disagree with anything you're saying.
I'm saying it's on the agenda, and we, and it can, and you, as part of that, and I'm assuming this is a massive statement, can ask for a development impact statement. Part of that development impact statement, and why I think the horse is before the cart, I mean, the cart before the horse, is that if you look at the things that are required for a development impact statement, they are crucial things that you will need to analyze in doing a site plan approval. What is the buffer zone? What is the wetlands? What is the traffic? What is the impact? All that information would be valid information for you to make a decision on site plan approval. So to me, why would you go here when, just put this thing on hold, ask for the preliminary subdivision application, and I would assume, again, a project of this size, you're going to ask for a development impact study, and then use that information to make this decision? Because everything that they ask for in this, in the, that is part of the development impact statement would be valuable information to determine buffer size and all the other decisions that you want to make on the site. So, the idea that you approve the site plan before you even have the discussion about the subdivision seems crazy to me because you should be asking these guys as part of the subdivision to do a development impact statement.
But we can't do that under a, under a site plan.
Under the preliminary subdivision in the future, which you have on your agenda, which is before this council...
For November 3rd, it's not today, it's November 3rd.
Right, so you should delay this, and then have that hearing, and then ask for the information, the development impact study that is, that is, can be required as part of that preliminary. Clearly, the, the regulations allow you to do that. You asked for that information, and now you have a complete study of which you can use to evaluate the site plan. You're gonna, you're, this information that's part of this development impact study is critical to do a proper site plan. And it's part, and you can do it. Just say to them, create a development impact statement as, as part of the subdivision. Put this on hold and have that discussion first. It seems crazy to me to have, to look at, carve out one little parcel and then, and then, you know, let the subdivision just kind of, you know, he wants a waiver that says, "I don't have to do an impact statement." That's crazy on a project like this. We know this project is massive, and this is phase one. So the information has, should be provided, it doesn't have to be, you can provide it. Make them provide that information, and then use it to make a more valid decision here, a more comprehensive decision, because you've now got a development impact study that includes a bunch of things. Traffic, impact on fire, impact on police, impact on schools, impact on the environment. You can require that, all that information. Put this thing on hold and get that information, then come back to the site plan approval. Thank you.
And I'm not looking for that, that people's having, we want the information tonight. Okay?
It's okay, just ask, just ask the council.
Yeah, not to belabor the point, but I do just want to make it, I think it bears repeating, the preliminary subdivision application is not our application. We have no role in it, no part in it, it's not our application. Again, if, if the subdivision plan was to be dropped entirely, it would change nothing at all for our site plan application. So it would be akin to if you had, you know, a home in a residential, you know, subdivision, and you wanted to get a permit for an accessory dwelling unit, and you were proceeding as the homeowner, or the prospective buyer for that permit. If the developer wanted to change lot lines somewhere else in the subdivision, that's a separate endeavor from what you're trying to do with your permit. So again, the subdivision is not our application at all. We have no involvement with it.
And I would offer, that's fine, it doesn't have to be, the owners don't have to be the same. It's clear, if you read, no, don't, if you read section one, I mean, the first section in MU2, it says that it has to be a coordinated project. That's the whole purpose of the multi-use zone. It doesn't have to be the same owner, it can be multiple owners. Alls I'm saying is, they have an application before you. That application, you can require a lot of information by the city's regulation on subdivision. It doesn't matter who, if it's him, or another owner, or five different owners. Put it on, put this on hold, get that information, and come back. It hasn't, it doesn't matter who the owner is. It's, you can require it as part of a subdivision, so get the information, get everything you can, so that you can make a valid decision here.
Do I have someone else that's supposed to speak?
Hello, Ashley Silva, 219 Harvard Street. I agree with Chelsea, and I think that sidewalks are very important. I have small children, they have to walk in the street to get to the bus stop because there are no sidewalks currently, and it is very dangerous. So please consider putting sidewalks on Harvard Street.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Connor Byrne, 284 Harvard Street. I also agree that we should put sidewalks on Harvard Street. It's incredibly dangerous. It's so dangerous to walk, so dangerous to bike, so dangerous to do anything, and with 308 additional apartments, it's going to be absolutely nuts. Also have a question, 284 Harvard Street, we have a really old stone wall. I just want to confirm that that's not going to be touched through the, the construction process. It's, it's literally the property line.
Yeah, if it's on your property, it won't be touched.
It's the property line.
Yeah, it is the property line, then probably won't, I don't know, I'd have to look at it. The city would have to look at it.
Yeah, if, basically, yeah, if it's on the property line, it won't be touched, we're not going up to the property line.
Yeah. Okay, do I have someone else?
Yeah, you knew what you were going to hear from me. Phil Brady, 214 Harvard. Couple of things that you're in the direct purview of this board that I hope you're taking into consideration. It's entirely up to you for a 50-foot buffer. They tried to manipulate it, they reduced it from a maximum to a minimum, excuse me, minimum to a maximum. I have tapes of the January 13th city council meeting where you misled the council on a number of things. I can prove that. But give us 50-foot minimum buffer, if not 100. A former counselor, who was a wetlands expert, said 17.9 acres, but half of that can't be developed because it's on wetlands. This has been a manipulation from the beginning. He's playing you guys like a flute. You've got to stop it. Please give us 50 feet minimum. Thank you.
Good evening, Liz Macarola, 75 Harvard Street. I also wanted to follow up with what Mr. Brady just said about the buffer, and I want to take it a step further and talk about the nature of that buffer. It is one thing to call the air between a building and someone's property line a buffer. It is another thing to leave the vegetation that's existing untouched, which is part of what you can require as part of that 50-foot buffer. It doesn't have to be manipulated in any way. And it used to be that the minimum was 50 feet. Now our ordinance is written, so it's the maximum. I would think that that would emphasize how important it is to at least meet that, what used to be the minimum. The 50 feet was not allowed to go, you weren't allowed to go below that before the zoning was changed, and it was changed in part to, to suit the specific parcel, because they wanted to maximize the build-out, and they've done that. So, you can require that they not remove trees within 50 feet of the property line all the way around, and the only reason that I can think of not to do that is so that they can build 308 apartments instead of maybe 290, if they have to scooch their buildings back a little bit. And I don't see how that is a bad thing for any of the residents of this city, and it is entirely within your purview to help. The natural buffer is going to do a lot more for the drainage and the retention of the water than any new planted vegetation is going to do. And in part of why I believe they are taking away what's existing up to the line is because they're manipulating the grading so extensively. And I know there have been a lot of concerns voiced about the nature of the regrading around the property lines and the impact the buffers, to the abutters. And the revised drainage plan certainly shows an improvement in the grading as far as the abutters are concerned, but it's not nearly going far enough. And all they need to do is scale back the density of this development a little bit. By right, they could build a lot more dense, right? But the, the lot won't even allow it. And I want that to sink in for a minute, like, they could build more apartments, but they're, the land won't allow it. So, let's try to give a little bit back to this process for the people who live here and the impacts that it's going to have on them, and require the 50-foot buffer between all of the abutters at the property lines. Require it to be untouched. From that point, they can manipulate their grading, they can create some of the cut slope for additional privacy, they can add the fencing, and they can add whatever additional landscaping they want, but leave a 50-foot swath around the edge untouched, and it will do more to mitigate the negative impacts on the abutters than any other step that this board has at its disposal. Thank you.
Do I have anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi, thank you, Sushal Fuzza for City Council here in Lemonster. As I heard Mr. Rollins talking about, you know, the importance of a development impact statement, I think that's really critical when you look at this whole thing potentially, and specifically its location over on Harvard Street in North Lemonster. And I've been looking, you know, through the planning board agendas and minutes and everything, and I came across this on the planning board page under overview. "The mission of the planning board is to preserve and enhance the quality of life for individual residents and the city community as a whole, to provide foresight and direction through an open, informed, and inclusive public decision-making process, and to ensure reasonably planned growth and development of land and its use in a manner that preserves the city's unique rural and historic character." I would ask you all to just keep that in mind when you're considering, you know, the steps, the discretion that you have as the planning board. Thank you.
Kristin Howlett, 33 Sky Lane. I'm not going to read my letter because some of it is the fencing, so thank you for addressing that. I was wondering, because it's hard to see from where I was, the specifics, if you could go through, again, how much of the buffer there is around that area? Like, I got all the way down to the corner, and then I got lost.
Are you talking about the cherry?
Yeah, I mean, I'm specifically talking about the Sky Lane area personally, but I'm sure.
Do you see the Sky Lane?
Yeah.
That's where that wetlands section is, up here to the, yeah, right up there.
Right, so what, what are those numbers? The buffer zone numbers?
Yeah, you're sure, if you, I guess through the chair, 15 feet from the property line to the fence, the fence again at the top of the slope, 33 feet from the property line to the back of that garage, that is, that is right here.
And is there a parking lot there too, or is, does it, is that a, just a garage? I can't, can you zoom in?
Yeah, I can. Yeah, so the garage is the closest point, it's 33 feet, the, the parking lot, or the parking spaces here, those are 36 feet away.
So then, again, I'm happy to just submit this letter because it has other things, but I'm requesting the 50 feet, and I know 15 feet might not seem a lot to this board, but plunking, you know, Brooks Pond in our backyard is, 20 feet will matter, it'll matter a lot. And then I know that someone addressed the dumpster, do you know where it went? I don't want to have pushed it to my neighbors.
Yep, no, again, through the, through the chair, it was previously located at this area here, we've relocated it down to this location down here.
Where is it?
Right, if you can see my little hand.
Oh, yeah, okay.
All right, again, so respectfully, with like the, and as the, my predecessor said, preferably untouched land, but we are requesting the 50 feet. Thank you so much.
Do I have anyone else?
Can I mention one other thing?
Sure.
I forgot.
What if we said no, Mr. Rich?
I don't know. That's a good question. At the January 13th meeting of the city council, when Ms. Wood was before it, Council Tossi had said this word, he said, "There's one road in and one road out," and her response was yes, "One road in, one road out. Now we have two. How many of you block one of them off?"
What was that in reference to?
It was in reference to this property. How did, how are they going to access it? One road in, one road out. I can play it for you if you'd like.
Okay, no, I don't know, I wasn't...
So, I would just, again, in that meeting, there was a number of things that were not, were not clearly stated. I can totally understand where the council got a little confused. So that leads into the other MU2 zoning. Thank you.
Hello, Hayley Bish, 219 Harvard Street. I just came up here to say I really agree with everything that was said before me regarding especially the sidewalks on Harvard Street. I feel like that is very important as a safety feature. I walk my nieces and nephews every day to the bus, and it's incredibly dangerous. And then also, just regarding like the infrastructure of North Lemonster, like getting a development impact statement, I feel like that would just be so crucial in looking at the overall picture of everything. You all were put into this position of power for a reason, appointed here, and I just, I know people probably hate being told to do, like, what their job is, to do that, but you were put in here to represent us, and we greatly appreciate all of your time and everything that you've done, and we just would appreciate a full 50-foot buffer, as they said, untouched land would be preferred, but we understand. And, yeah, I mean, as much as you can, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, Brenda Moses, 8 Ridgewood Circle. I just want to see if we're going to pay more attention to the traffic around that area. I know, and I think it was 23, Mayor Mazarello put on Facebook that he was going to look into the DOT to have them do some kind of a survey with Route 2 because the traffic was so bad then. And I, it's like, one report is like 40 pages, I think, another one's like 148 pages. They're proposing that they go from Concord to right past Twin City Plaza, shut down some on-ramps and off-ramps, and add a lane to each side of the highway. That's a long way, that's going to be millions and millions of dollars, so that's probably not going to happen. And coming up from like the old Baker Cadillac, I was in traffic for 23 minutes the other day to get from there to Prospect Street. Thank you.
Hello again, Liz Macarola, 75 Harvard Street. Just to follow up on that, I do want to also reiterate again the importance of this development impact study that you can request. I don't see why we wouldn't want this additional information, including about traffic and public safety, schools, the impacts are just huge for this, and because the zoning did away with the special permit, we lost an opportunity to look into all of that. The subdivision plan that has been submitted is an opportunity for us to be able to really dig down into these issues and make sure that we're making the best choice for the city. And I highly just, I really want to highlight how important it is that you take advantage of this opportunity. I think it would go a long way toward the residents to see you slow this process down and take the time that it needs so that everything involved can be carefully considered. There is no downside to pumping the brakes and carefully considering each piece before us, and use each tool to gather more information as you can. I realize that you don't have it within your purview to take care of, you know, to wipe this away, right? But you do have a lot of tools at your disposal, and we just ask that you use them.
But you do have a lot of tools at your disposal, and we just ask that you use them. So slow the process down, require the development impact study. Because, you know, when this preliminary subdivision, excuse me, plan was submitted, obviously the site plan is already underway, a site plan review, and we've talked about cart before the horse, et cetera. Whether or not it's the same owners, applicant, it's all a coordinated effort. This has been coordinated from the time that the MU2 zoning was changed. It was changed based on recommendations from the developer to the city, and every single one of the recommendations was adopted into MU2 zoning. Now they've got a preliminary subdivision plan before you, which if approved will lock in the zoning for eight years. And that is what I believe is the reason that subdivision preliminary plan is sitting before you tonight. So let's be careful. Let's take measured steps, look at the impacts all the way around to our city and the residents of this community, and let's make sure that the choices we're making for the future of the city and this neighborhood are really responsibly done. Thank you.
Thank you.
We welcome any other responses, but does anyone have anything different to say? Well, if it's different.
Hi. Rachel King, 55 Sky Lane. I have questions regarding the access roads. So the industrial road?
Yep.
Is that included in the acreage?
What's that?
Is it included in the acreage? The 17-point whatever?
The one on the back?
Yep.
No.
No.
That's separate, because that was under a totally separate plan.
Very conveniently separate.
Well, no, not conveniently. That was done by the city for a specific reason.
Can we ask the, I'd like to hear from the applicant to respond to that.
Can you hear me? No, that's not included in the acreage.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Does anybody know how many acres it is?
The actual road?
Yeah. Do you think that if we were to add that road to the proposed development, would that exceed the 20 acres?
That's an assumption.
I mean, we can just, it's just a question that we could measure.
I don't, we don't normally do the roads that exist, and we do this all the time.
But nobody uses that road. Right now, it's completely blocked off.
Whether it's using--
No, it is very, very important. If you think about the lights--
I'm not going to argue with you, ma'am. It's a valid road, okay, that was approved by the city council and put in as a separate project. As I understand, nothing to do with it. It would do more to industrial development for a warehouse or a building or something, which I really wasn't, we weren't, this planning board was not part of that.
I realize you're not a part of it, but connecting the dots, there's no industrial building there, and there may very well be someday, but right now it's completely blocked off, and the way that the traffic pattern is set up is so unsafe, so this would also, if this happens, require lights. If you've ever driven down Orchard Hill Plaza, before those barriers were there, the number, there were a lot of close calls of accidents because there's no signage. So they did finally put barriers, Jersey barriers. So would this come to pass? What's going to happen there? That needs to be accounted for.
You've got a good question. I don't know. What I'm saying is, when we put in a subdivision, we added one that we had on Willard Street, not to, yeah, within the last couple of years. I didn't add Willard Street onto it.
Right. I don't care about Willard Street. I mean, I hope all those people are happy on Willard Street.
On any subdivision, we don't add the road that it goes to as part of that subdivision.
Right. But it's very convenient that that road is being used but not accounted for. And if it was, my point is, if it was to be included, it would be more than 20 acres, and they would need the special permits, and this would not be a situation. And I just want you to keep that in mind, how convenient all these things just lined right up. And should this come to pass, we need to have a plan for the lights there. Has that been addressed?
I'll agree, no, that's different. I agree. If that road wasn't there, okay, the economic justification for this project probably wouldn't be there because the cost to put in that road would add to the total cost. I don't, that's an assumption on my part, but the fact is, for other reasons that this board was not part of, that road was put in, and we've never added, you know, say, okay, because you're next to a road, we're going to add that acreage in. No, we just have the acreage of the actual project. Your assumption is probably pretty good, but I can't, assumptions get me in trouble. And, you know, and there's nothing to document that in that way. So we have to, in my mind, I have to keep that separate because it was approved as a separate road. Yes, I agree. Probably if that road wasn't there, this project wouldn't be here. But it is there, and that gives us the input.
It is there, and it was paid for by the taxpayers with a grant from the state of Massachusetts for an industrial project that does not exist, and it's only being used as of now for this proposal.
That's no--
So that being said, what would be the traffic plan for lights? How would people get in and out without causing an accident?
I can't do that.
I'm asking, ma'am. I know you don't have the answer.
I can answer that.
Oh, hi, Sean.
Sean Kelly with Chapel Engineering. So again, as you pointed out at the past hearings, we've done a full traffic study. We've looked at the operations with the project in place. With respect to a light there, there's a minimum vehicular criteria that you need to put a traffic light in. You just can't pull one up because you think it's a good idea. And I can tell you that the volume of traffic that is going to come out of the back of this site towards that intersection, I would say almost, even if you took all of the traffic and put out that intersection, you're not even going to be close to meeting the warrants to put a traffic light up. So understand the concern, and certainly there will be measures there. There'll be stop signs, there'll be signage, there'll be pavement markings, but the level of traffic this project generates would never meet the criteria to put a traffic light up.
I think the, I'm taking a guess, I think she was more concerned about streetlights.
No.
No, you want traffic light? No, traffic light--
What would the signage be?
Well, the driveway itself, what I will call it, the industrial road as you characterize, it would be a stop sign control. So they would yield to the traffic, the traffic patterns that exist today where the right-of-way is the cars going around the bend would maintain, the traffic leaving the project would be forced to stop and look for a gap in traffic in each direction. And we've looked at the sightlines, you know, we're on the outside of the curve. You can see straight up the hill, looking at cars coming from Target. When you get to that stop line location, look to the left, you can see vehicles coming from the industrial side. So we meet the sightline criteria. The stop sign is the preferred method of traffic operations. And again, even if every car that this project generates came out that driveway, we're not going to be even close to the warrants we would need to put a light up there.
Okay, I have another really important point, though, and hopefully--
Okay.
You might be able to answer it, Sean. So the people that are coming down Orchard Hill towards Lunenburg, the way that it looks when you're coming down, you want to go straight. You want to go straight, and they're going to end up going straight up into that road, which is what the problem was with the accidents that were happening before they put up the Jersey barrier. So what signage would be there so that those drivers are kept safe from head-on collisions with people coming up from Lunenburg and the people going towards Lunenburg? Because they're going to think that they have the right-of-way, especially if they're familiar with the area, maybe not, but we have people coming from out of town all the time. What would the solution be to that?
Right. Certainly, we can look at different options. I mean, there's ways to put up a sign that says private road. There's ways to put signs that say through traffic with an arrow to the right to let them know that the path to travel is to make that bend. I mean, there were a number of ways we can look at that, but ultimately, at the end of the day, the signage and pavement marking is going to be the solution here. A traffic light would not be the solution.
Okay.
Stephen White, 35 scenic drive in Leominster. I want to reinforce the need for a development review plan. With the MU2 zoning the way it is, my understanding is this is the first 300 units. There's another 300 units that would be possible, as well as another 300 beyond that. And there's no way adding up close to 1,000 units of housing up in that area. It's not going to impact traffic, public safety, infrastructure, all of that. So what is the process to stop this? This horse is out of the barn, and I'm hearing, well, this is separate, we're going to get this done, and then the other thing, whatever that comes, we'll deal with it. It really needs to be addressed as part of a development plan for the whole thing. You can't just parcel this out 300 units at a time and expect the city and the residents to be able to absorb that and deal with it. So I'd like to understand what that process is. How does that get dealt with if you don't deal with this as a development plan in total?
At this point, we can't, everything you've said is right, but it's also an assumption, you know, to a point where it could happen. And I'm not disagreeing, okay? And the process is that the city would develop a committee, you might say, it could be the planning board, it could be the city council, to study it, and then to come up with an adequate plan to control it, one way or the other. I have no idea what it would be or what that committee would come up with, but the process, and that would be the process. It could be a neighborhood committee, it could be anywhere set up to make recommendations to the planning board and to the city council, and that we both can look at it and hope make an intelligent decision. Okay, so that's the process.
It seems we're a little bit late. You know, this goes back to, you know, MU2, and this started, and now it doesn't seem like we're going to stop it because the next phases are already coming forward. You know, it's a rush to get this through while you can. And it's very unfortunate, you know, as people have said, we rely on the mayor, we rely on you guys to plan, to do the planning, and make sure that you're taking care of the residents and the city, and it's just--
Okay, I'm not, yeah, I agree. But also, we have a problem that the offices in Boston are pushing things on, not only us, but every city and town in this state, okay, to increase housing. And what they're doing is, well, they are, and it's another issue, but they're to increase housing, and they're threatening to take--
Yeah, but they want affordable housing, not market-rate apartments in 1,000 and--
I'm not going to argue that issue. That's all done.
I implore you, please, think of that development site plan and slow this down because we're going to be buried up in North Leominster more than we are--
Thank you.
I promise I'll be super quick again. Just Haley Brady, 2500 Harvard Street. Just to be clear for everybody, this is not part of the MBTA. We don't need this for compliance. You're well within your rights to tell them. They might pressure you, you can tell them to slow down. This is your city, not theirs. Couple specifics while Traffic and Fussin' O'Neill are here. Leaving Orchard Hills, they go on that access road. Say you need to go to Lunenburg, the closest gas station is right there. You need to turn out as you see the street. That is like super dangerous. Everybody coming from that area, you have to slow down and take the sharp turn. People leaving the development have to take a very, very sharp left. There's no line of sight there.
I'll refer that to the traffic engineer.
Sure. If you want me--
Yeah.
Again, as part of our traffic study, we looked at the sightlines there, we looked at the operations there. It's been peer reviewed by your consultant. They signed off on our work and said there was no issue, so we can talk about it. The answer's not going to change. Ultimately, it's not an unusual intersection, frankly. When you come out of the access drive and you make that left-hand turn, it's not, certainly it's not 90 degrees, but it's not a hairpin turn. The sightlines, when you're looking to the left, you can see down the hill toward the road bends around towards the industrial, heading towards Lunenburg. We've looked at this, we've looked at the speeds, we've looked at the sightlines. Your engineers reviewed it, they've signed off on it and said that they were in agreement, and that's really all we can offer tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just quickly bringing that up. Stormwater. I know he's here, I just had a couple quick questions. I haven't seen the last peer review, but has all the drainage been turned away from all of the vernal pools certified and potential?
I will let them explain to what they've done on that.
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, sure. I'm basically with Boulder Engineering. We've met the criteria of the stormwater handbook, so that involves keeping stormwater discharges more than 100 feet from the vernal pools and keeping all stormwater VMPs 100 feet from the vernal pools, which we've done. Additionally, not required per the stormwater regulations. We did look at a detailed pre and post-analysis of the vernal pools themselves, how much water they get in both conditions as part of just the impact to the wetlands themselves. But from a stormwater standpoint, we've met the criteria of the stormwater handbook.
And just to make a point is, we're dealing with certain things here, and we still have to deal with the Conservation Commission, and they're more in tune to drainages and those kind of calculations.
Absolutely. It falls under both purviews, though. You guys intersect on that?
Right. We usually defer to the Conservation Commission for those things.
And then the last question. I know Fussin' O'Neill had a comment about the stormwater being directed onto Harvard Street. It is against Leominster ordinance to direct nuisance stormwater onto any other property, but given this particular design, there was really no other solution. But if it is going to go against a city ordinance, I believe it's within your purview to not allow that and tell them to redesign. That would be the access in and out on Harvard Street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want me to address it? If you have something--
Yeah, sure. The area that I think was mentioned, the peer review, is this area down here, the driveway even just coast to Harvard Street. No stormwater's being discharged out into Harvard Street. There's a small section here that can't be collected in the proposed tree box filter here that goes through a riprap apron swale and then down into the woods off to the side. So nothing's being discharged over the roadway, just there's a small section that bypasses the tree box filter treatment there.
Are you talking about that front, the very front?
Yeah, just this little section here at the end of where it intersects.
So if it bypasses, it's going on to Harvard Street?
No, it goes through a riprap apron here at the entrance of the driveway down into the woods along the side of Harvard Street. Harvard Street has a crown, it doesn't go across it.
And then how much bypasses that?
Do you, I can answer if--
Yes. What was the question?
How much of that bypasses that riprap system?
I was thinking with non-bypassed riprap system, there's a small section along the apron here that bypasses the tree box filter, which--
Is it 10 feet, 20 feet, 50 feet?
It's 50 feet.
Yeah, something like that, yeah, 30 feet, 30, 40 feet, something like that. Just whatever couldn't, by gravity, go to the tree box filter.
Yeah. Your peer review did a great job, like, picking up on those things, but, I mean, this design, there's really not much more they can do, but if we know it's going to be an issue, and we know it's going to cause ice dams, and we know it's going to be a safety issue, change your design. If that's the best you can do with this design, change it.
Sean, can I? You could come up, ma'am, you could come up, but I just want to know, we've discussed sidewalks?
Nope. I have just one question. Nope.
Brenda Moses, 8 Ridgewood Circle. I know that these guys over here can't see the map, and I don't think those guys over there can see the map, and I can't because I'm getting old. Is this available online for everyone to see that we can look at it? Elizabeth, right?
It's available to anybody that requests it. It can be sent to you by email. We said that several times at other meetings. You may not have been at the meeting, but we'll say it again tonight. You can just, anytime. We've had a lot of requests. We've given everybody that's requested the information, the copies of the plans.
Just mass.gov or--
No, no, no. My email is on the website, ewood@lemonster-m.gov. So I'll get it to you, or I have staff that can help do.
Thanks. Sean, if I could.
Go ahead.
Does anyone have anything different? We've discussed sidewalks, the impact statement with the preliminaries, traffic. Does anyone have anything different?
I just wondered if we could zoom in on the Harvard Street new access road area, and you could take us through that a little bit more carefully.
It's same traffic.
Okay. So as I understood the latest version of the plans that I was able to see, you've got a 30-foot elevation change at up to an 8% grade leading down to Harvard Street. That's already an area that collects a lot of ice during the winter, and the residents need to be extra careful driving through. So, yeah, it's a very steep slope. The applicant did a drawing of the section through at one of the peer review's requests. The section stops at Harvard Street?
I think we had addressed that very early, because it originally was eight, and I think we dropped it to five or six.
Yeah, sure. The traffic peer review did have a comment relative to the slope, in particular, the slope as it approached Harvard Street. So this section within the first 100 feet from the road to up the driveway is at 4%, and then it goes to 8% after that.
4%, yeah.
But it's 8% up to the clubhouse area, which is then just going to run down into the 4%, which is then going to run down onto Harvard Street. And what the peer review had stated was that it seemed that the applicant had put forth the best plan that they could, given the circumstances, which doesn't say that they met requirements or city ordinances to keep stormwater runoff off of adjacent properties. It just says--
It just says, given this design and the outlet onto Harvard Street, this might be the best they could do. And I don't think we should stand for that. So can you talk us through how water will be, when it runs down the road, where is it going on your plan?
Yeah, sure. Again, the stormar has been reviewed, updated. No more comments on the stormar. But I can talk through this. The stormar coming down the road is collected within a catch basin and a discharge within a bio retention year. The section from the road here is collected within a tree box filter around here and discharged into the woods. Like any project at the driveway, there's a small section of the driveway which can't be collected by gravity into that system. That just charges through a break in the curb here, and then down into the woods here, not into Harvard Street.
And the wetlands are where?
The wetlands are the dark green here.
So it's the same place as where the stormwater runoff is going to go to, that you can't collect?
Yep. All runoff goes to, yeah, eventually down.
So all the runoff that you can't collect is going into the wetlands? Is that correct?
For this section here, yep.
Okay. I think we should all pay attention to that. I would also like you to scroll a little bit to the left on the map so you can see the adjacent properties affected. So you're going right into a driveway for local businesses?
Yeah, I don't... It's not going to flow across Harvard Street, I guess.
Okay, right. It's going to flow into the wetlands. I'm sorry. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I know you're so... You're so sick of hearing from me. And I promise this was short. That wetland system, very closed, that one is certified to a certain degree, directing stormwater discharge or any discharges in that direction to a certified, you know, vernal pool.
It should have been calculated, it was in the calculations.
I...
I mean, that's what we get for calculation.
We do have our consultant here if we need him.
Hi. My name's Scott Turner. I'm with Fussin' O'Neill. We've done the peer review for the stormwater. The last two letters that we wrote were October 6th and October 16th. They were related directly to the vernal pools and their handling of stormwater discharges to the vernal pools. They've changed, they've modified the design to keep water, direct discharges away from the vernal pools. They've made some adjustments within the site. You know, as they mentioned before, they have reduced the discharge and the volume of stormwater to the vernal pools. We had a few comments regarding sizing of culverts, riprap pads. They addressed those. We signed off on that on our October 16th letter.
And so on the issue they just raised?
So that area is downstream of the vernal pools. And that area was something that we looked at during our initial letter. Whenever you have any kind of site development, there is always a small area of driveway that typically discharges, you know, you can't collect. It's just the way, the geometry of the entrance and the topography of the site. So they have met the treatment standards as a whole for the entire subdivision. I'm sorry, not the subdivision, the site plan. Everything that they've done is consistent with stormwater management standards.
Certified wetlands?
The certified vernal pools are... You know, there are loose performance standards regarding performance of the stormwater discharges to the vernal pools. We, you know, we summarize what we saw. It's consistent with projects that we do. I understand that the Conservation Commission's going to look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Search upon 49 Sky Lane. My usual concern is public safety. But I was extremely pleased to hear the definition of what you guys are supposed to do according to your chapter when Chancellor Su mentioned that. So we are talking about 1,000 people who will be living in rental units here, and three other projects coming up. And we don't really know what's going to happen there. And you, John, mentioned several times about the assumptions. So obviously, I agree with you. You cannot rule anything on the assumptions. But we know that that's going to happen because obviously, notices of intent are already coming. So if you very simply Google "what is North Leominster is", it comes up in many, many different ways. It's predominantly, almost 100%, owner occupied living houses there. So we are throwing in up to 1,000 rental units of transient people who have absolutely no stake in this city. So with the notion of what Chancellor Su just said, how you need to look for the better of the city, how that comes to play. And to stop the assumptions, John, why don't you ask the developer and the owner to provide something in writing? What are their plans for the remaining lots? And that will be on the record, and there will be no assumptions anymore. Thank you.
Hi. Chelsea Madison, 65 Harvard Street. Is there a way where we can just have them not have a road going onto Harvard Street and just have everything on, like, the back end? Can we request that they just don't have that road? Because if we're concerned about sewage water running down, that means salt's going to run down, and the wetlands are going to dry up, and it's going to go onto Harvard Street. It just seems like the ideal would be just don't let them have this road coming out of Harvard Street.
I don't know a way of doing that.
We don't have, you guys don't have the power to be able to ask for that?
We just do just the opposite. We're looking for two exits, okay?
Can they have an exit on a different area?
And, but, you know, for emergency reasons and a lot of other things, there's traffic. You know, your alternative would be the back road and to put all the traffic out that way. I don't know of a way to do that.
Could they redesign it so there is a way for them to...
Well, I mean, anything could be redesigned.
Yeah. Because it seems like they're going to, it feels like the general...
But see, we'll get into the other end of it. We also have direction that we go over a certain number of units. We're looking for multiple access points. So making it all to go to one, you know... In fact, we have an ordinance for, if you have a cul-de-sac, you know, it can be five, the ordinance say, is 500 feet. We have a cul-de-sac on Sky Lane at 1,600 feet. We approved that many years ago. So there's some flexibility. But that's pretty much the maximum that we do so that you don't get too much traffic coming out of one spot. But to say, no, you can't come out to a certain place, and you have to come out the back, we've never done that. Okay? Not that I know of, anyway.
Do you know if it's within your power to do something to, like, try to ask them to redesign it in a certain way? Just, I'm just concerned about the water in this runoff.
Oh, we could ask, but, you know, they don't have to.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys.
Do I have anyone else? Okay. Last one another time?
I don't want to get up again. I know. You're so sick of hearing from me. And I promise it'll be quick. You can and you have do emergency vehicle access only, meaning the traffic wouldn't be allowed to flow onto Harvard Street. It would only be for emergency vehicle access. It has been done, and it is in your purview to require that, if you wanted.
John, I have a proposal for the board. So I think lawfully, we could look at this plan, at this site plan, separately and independently from anything else that may be pending up there. I think, and I think our counsel has said so, that we can look at it independently. It's a site plan. It's not a subdivision. It's not owned by the same applicant. It's not, the same applicant is not the petitioner, and they're two separate plants. So I think legally, we could do that. But we're the planning board, and frankly, I don't think that's good planning. So I would like, while I think I've heard everything I'm going to hear about this particular site plan, which, you know, I'll be candid, which frankly, I'm not vehemently opposed to with the way the ordinance is written. I will be candid right now, because I don't want to waste any more time in the following meetings. I will be looking, or at least today, unless something changes, the 50-foot buffer are the maximum we're looking for. And I would be looking for or requesting sidewalks as well. So with that, now, but that, with that said, I would like to continue this to the November 3rd meeting, which I'm going to say I wanted to do initially. But we thought it was going to be an exceptionally long meeting among the preliminary, the site plan, and the petition for the zone change. But all of these meetings are long. And we wouldn't have had this issue tonight about overlapping this if we had put them all on the same evening. And I never speak like this. But that's what we should have done. So now I'm asking for it for a second time. All of these three issues will be on the same night. People are saying, oh, it's going to be a really long meeting. It might not be a really long meeting, because we've discussed it. So what my proposal is, is to continue this to the next meeting. That's not to say, I'm saying it right now, that's not to say. I'm going to say, these are all the same parcels. It should have gone to the city council first. I've not, I don't know if I'm going to say that or not. But I think they should all be on the same night. Because I want, I don't know what the preliminary subdivision looks like. All we did was schedule it for the preliminary hearing. And it may not even go through, because it's a preliminary. They didn't file a definitive. But I don't know the answer to those questions. So I'll make the motion when I'm ready to make the motion. I'm just making this clear, because...
I want to make some clear, too.
So what I'm, so what I'd like to do is put everything on the same night. And I don't know what the order is, but we have to do them, obviously, separately. So I make the motion to continue this hearing to November 3rd with the applicant and the abutters keeping in mind what at least my thoughts are. I'm only one member out of eight members who are voting on this.
Okay.
I'd like to add...
Go ahead, Seattle.
You going to second that?
I will second that. But, you know, I thought that you would come back with a 50-foot buffer. That's why I didn't want to give specifics out. And if you came back with a 50-foot buffer around the property, that might get rid of some of the density issues. Or you reconfigure buildings, one way or the other. But there might not be 308. It might be less density-wise. I would not support this without a 50-foot buffer all the way around. And that is our purview. We can ask for that. And I thought we were pretty clear about that at the last meeting. So I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, just to make clear, and I know a motion hasn't been made yet. As we've discussed at other hearings, it can't be continued without the applicant's agreement, because we're past the 90 days. Just so...
Okay. Is there anything before we vote on this motion so that we have everything, so that they can act on it? Okay?
Are we going to ask for it?
Yeah. Let me finish here. Is like, a part of the requirement is the 50 feet, okay? And I think, and we probably, and if it is, it's the sidewalks, okay? And that that's a request that they look at it and come back with a plan. Okay? So I want to get the general questions we have so that we can answer everything at the next meeting and not have something else come up at that to continue, continue, continue. Because I really, you know, not for the sake of helping a contractor, just to, you know, let's get this done and once and for all, one way or the other. So that's what, you know, I want to see done. So is there anything else from the board members that you want to have them to look at specifically prior to the next meeting?
We can't ask them for development impacts.
No.
That goes to the...
No. That's not part of this.
It's not part of it. And I know we can...
So, I mean, we have a restriction also, so... Okay. So I think we have the majority, the input from the board, is that, you know, we have a motion on the floor to continue to November 3rd and for you to look at the possible sidewalks and the 50-foot buffer, what has to be done there, as specific items. So, you know, with that said, I'll call for the motion.
Here's, they have to...
Oh, they have to agree.
Because it's an extension.
It was extended to October 20th, 2025. So that was tonight.
Right. We have to get their permission to go.
Yeah, we've got a request from you to, okay, to move it to November 3rd.
Spencer Holland, on behalf of Wood Partners. So the applicant will agree to the continuance to November 3rd. There's just kind of one fine point I want to make just about the sidewalk issue specifically. I think, you know, the buffers, the 50-foot maximum is within, you know, the planning board's discretion. With respect to the sidewalks, my understanding, and I'd want to look at the language again under the Leominster zoning ordinance, is that the sidewalks can be a part of the condition only with respect to those roads that are adjacent to the site. I know there was a correspondence about Stagecoach, which I looked up and appears to be kind of more than not adjacent to the site. I understand Harvard is. But the, again, additional caveat to put there is that Massachusetts case law is clear that the conditions of site plan approval can only be those that are actually within the applicant's control. So to the extent that a sidewalk would need to go into other private property that's outside of the city layout, that would obviously be a condition outside of the applicant's control to create an improvement on land that they don't own and the city doesn't own.
Do you agree with that, counsel?
Yes. On a site plan, on a special permit, in theory, you could do it on a site plan. You can't...
That's one of the differences between the site plan. I think we discussed that earlier, between a site plan and special permit. Special permit, we could require that. And in a site plan, we can't. So, okay. So with that said, that information is that you do agree to November 3rd to continue this.
Can you send a letter to the planning office, Plan Breaker?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So I have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing on a call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
So 6:50? Or 7 o'clock?
7 o'clock.
We have 6:50 available.
6:50?
What's at 6:30?
We have 4:88 Main Street at 6:30, ADUs at 6:35, Orchard Hill Park preliminary subdivision at 6:40, Pioneer Drive preliminary subdivision at 6:45.
Can we move ADUs out? Because we don't have a requirement for that.
Legal killing...
Why do I have to wait for the meeting?
Do we have to wait to the meeting to move ADUs? It's a hearing on the zoning amendment.
It's a new subdivision, a new regulation.
It's a planning board hearing for a new...
New one, that's right. It's a planning board hearing.
As long as it's opened in 65 days.
I'd have to do the math.
I don't know.
So 6:50?
Well, we know it's been a month.
Well, if it's been open, then it can be continued. It just has to be opened within 65 days of when it's submitted to the board.
Okay. While we do that, we'll just open it, and then we'll continue it. Okay. Okay, we got a motion on the floor, and I, and it was passed.[1733.83] Okay, we got a motion on the floor, and I, and I, it was passed, but cleared. Yeah, it's voted, that's answered, cleared. Okay, it's continued, we just, but I just wanted to get the scheduling squared away before everybody left. Well, we have to vote that, is it?
We have a lot on the agenda.
We got a lot on the agenda.
It's gonna be.
Okay, we're gonna move on? Open Public Hearing City Council Petition, 9-26 Susan Scheller-Folzefer, Brandon Robbins, Counsel at Large, Ward 1, Counsel Robert M. Tossi, and 10 registered voters, request to amend zoning ordinance pertaining to M12. We have a clerical error here where the. When the petition was sent out for information to the planning board and to everyone else.
Well, there were two versions, there were two versions of the.
There were two versions, and one version went out missing page 2 and missing page 4. So we have insufficient information, we cannot take this up at this evening, so it's gonna have to be rescheduled.
I believe you have to open it.
We just found out. I'll have to open, I'm gonna open it, but we can't, we can't, there'll be no, no discretion. So I'm opening the, I'm opening it, but I'm, you know, we have to continue it, because incorrect information was, was sent out. A clerical error.
Before they speak, can we open it?
It is open.
We have, we opened it, yes.
I've opened it, yeah. The mistake is the pages 1, 3 came out.
No, 2 and 4 were missing from some versions. When the public asked for information, some of the public were given from the clerk's office incomplete versions of the petition.
What did the planning board get? What did you get?
I got.
We got two different versions.
I can show you what I got, Sue.
I got one correct version from the clerk, and I got one incorrect version from the clerks.
Could you, could you distribute?
So you have the correct version?
Oh, well, I gave you the wrong one.
But the public, and was, there are people from the public that were given incorrect version. I was approached by members of the public. And they were asking me about missing pages.
It is open.
Legally, though.
And it can't discuss it, because it's incorrect.
Our legal counsel's here who can put some light on to this if we need it.
I'll ask counsel to explain.
I was given a correct version, but my office was also given an incorrect version, and both versions got circulated.
So you sent out the wrong version?
The clerk's office, the clerk's office provided.
Excuse me. Well, let our counsel explain.
Yeah, so my understanding is, I don't really know any of these facts, but that the, one version was missing two pages, and that included the version that was disseminated to the public. So part of the public notice process for a public hearing on a zoning change is that the public's aware of what the zoning change is, is about. And I think in this case, there would be an argument to be made that the public notice was faulty. Because this was the 65th day, the hearing should be opened and then continued, and subsequent notice made somehow, to be sure that everybody who wants to be heard has the complete version. And that would be my opinion. I mean, you wouldn't wanna open the hearing and then have all this not matter, because someone argues the notice was faulty.
But the notice is what is required in terms of the advertisement, is that correct?
Yes.
Posted, what's posted within City Hall was posted online, and what's posted in the local newspaper, right?
Yes, but the one online also missed the pages. So if someone read the notice, the link to go look and see what it said wasn't the accurate version. That's my understanding. And on those facts, I would suggest continuing it to, in order to not risk the notice being claimed to be faulty.
So it's more to be on the safe side, that we don't have somebody come back to us later on.
I mean, the public.
Get the proper information.
No, no, I'm sorry, yeah, no, the public hearing can be continued, as, once it's open, it can be continued as many times as possible, so you can, you can close it, you open the hearing, continue to the next time, do the notice in the meantime, as, you know, to fix what was faulty the first time, would be my advice on how to proceed. Because again, the last thing you wanna have happen is to have this whole process be deemed to have been faulty, 'cause the notice wasn't correct.
I mean, why can't we put it on the third, everything?
On the 3rd.
On the 3rd. I don't, that's what I asked for when all of these came in at the same time. I mean, who cares if it's a six-hour meeting? We're here for four hours anyway, so what's another two hours?
It's a lot.
Keep talking about the same things over and over again, I wanna do it in one night. And I think all of you do too, you have families at home, you have children at home. Let's talk about it all in one night.
I, well, I came here to talk about it tonight, and I thought it would be a really easy public hearing after the last one, because it's pretty straightforward in my mind, it's a very simple explanation, and I thought that we could, you know, get through it, and then we would be done, rather than continuing. So I will get to the bottom of, you know, the, the mix-up and the mistake, and I apologize to everybody, including the planning board and the public, they got the wrong information, because that's not the way that we operate.
Yeah, it happens, and.
It does happen, and I'm sorry about that.
But with that said, with me ranting about that, because I like things efficiently and all done the same night, if it was done correctly, I was prepared to go forward tonight as well.
Yeah.
But, so with that said, but.
Okay.
So a motion would be in order to continue this hearing to?
7 o'clock on November 3rd.
7 o'clock on November 3rd. Have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing on a call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Sorry, guys.
Yeah, I don't know what the.
6:40. Over Public City Council Petition, 15-26 Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the planning board, request to amend zoning ordinance pertaining to battery energy storage systems.
Chair, we'd like to request a continuance for this. We have more information from the state on this with model, with model zoning ordinances, and we just need to do some more research before we.
That will not be November 3rd, move that to December?
December 1st?
December 3rd, yeah.
December 1st, at 6:30.
Okay. Make a motion, as it said, we continue to December 1st?
Yep.
December 1st at 6:30.
At 6:30.
Any further discussion?
We need a second.
Do I have a second?
Patrick.
Get it to Pat. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Any public comment, or?
Call to order.
Patrick Perla.
Here. Could you leave the conversations outside, please? We're still in a government public hearing. Thank you.
Paul Weiser. Salvatore Chakuni. Caravatore Oso. Tom Kergnen. Jason Paray. Dean Valier. John Souza.
Here.
Can I just ask a naive question, like off the record, just, is that okay? So with the MU2 zoning being moved to November 3rd, will the other subdivisions be voted on before the MU2 removal is voted on?
We don't know if we're gonna vote on them, or?
Okay, but nothing would be voted on before the MU2 zoning is voted on, if anything is voted on. Well, the subdivisions get voted to move forward with the MU2 zoning.
But anything that was applied for prior to the change of zoning, whenever that occurs, is grandfathered under the.
Is grandfathered already?
It's grandfathered, what exists today, exists today.
Okay.
So if you change the zoning, it would grandfather. The only impact is that that, that property would become a, we classify it non-conforming, okay? But they could still continue with what their plan is.
Okay, thank you, guys. It's just a recommendation, okay?
Are you the author of the sidewalk law?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it, it took a lot of thought into that. Thank you, guys.
One minute, huh?
I'm sorry, I have to stand up.
I don't know. I would say there could be one, maybe. I don't know. We don't have a previous dashboard. Okay, did the call to order minutes, previous meeting? We don't have any?
We didn't have, yeah, none.
Nothing on the last minute?
None.
Old business, site plan application, Orchard Hill Park, Mark 386, Block 4, Lot 1C, multifamily residential, this has been continued. New business, City Council Petition, 9.26 Susan Scheller-Folzefer, Brandon Robbins, Counsel at Large, Ward 1, Counsel Robert M. Tossi, and 10 registered voters, request to amend zoning ordinance pertaining to MU2 zoning. Planning board to make recommended to City Council, this has been continued. City Council Petition, 15-26 Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of planning board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to battery energy storage systems. Planning board to make recommendation to City Council, this has been continued. Do I have a director's report? Do I have any communications?
None.
Done.
Director's report.
All set.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Anything, oh, did, oh, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, could I just make one public statement? I really wasn't gonna do this, but based on the continuance and all that, it's just really coincidental, it's right before the election, you're not gonna put the city council on the spot.
I didn't even think.
I did.
I know, you didn't think of that.
That's a, that's a, that's a low.
Come on, you know, that's the.
That is not even.
That's bad.
That's my last, that, that is. I don't even, there is no consideration made to anybody's heart. I have no idea. Make a motion, adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. What a, you're gonna be kidding me.